The Holden Beach Board of Commissioners' regular meeting is now in session. We want to start with an invocation, okay? And we'll just have a few moments of silence. Want to call to meet in order? We want to give the pledge of allegiance right now. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we move to item four on our agenda. Agenda approval.
Mayor Proton, I'd like to make a motion that we remove from the current agenda items fifteen and sixteen and replace number fifteen with a new agenda item for the discussion and possible action on the draft inlet hazard area proposal.
Second.
Okay.
How do we vote?
Like, have a little discussion first.
Okay.
So, the reason that I'm adding this to the agenda, contrary to a position I always take about adding items at the last minute, is that I was asked by a couple of the people in the community to put it on the agenda so that people who wanted to speak to that particular subject could do it at the beginning of the meeting rather than having to wait till the end of the meeting. In addition, a majority of the board and town staff attended a meeting at the county offices on December seventeenth, which we discussed at the last Commissioner's meeting, which addressed many of the issues and the problems that the town staff recognized in this particular proposal. And then we had the CRC have a representative come here last week on Thursday, and this room was full of residents who were, to say the least, in opposition to the proposal. And so tonight, I thought it would be a good idea to add this to the agenda so people could let us know exactly how they feel about it and we could just listen to the community as we've all said that's what we would like to do. So, that's why I'm looking to put it on the agenda.
Do I have a motion?
No, he made the motion.
Okay. Got a second? I will vote.
I vote for him.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes got it. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of our last minutes meetings.
I make a motion that we approve the last minutes meetings, minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. At this time, right here, we're going to have public comments on agenda items. Anything on the agenda that you would want to speak about? And right now, was there anyone that didn't sign up that wanted to have anything to say? I mean, there's a place on the back you sign up at? That wanted to speak?
You got the sheet.
We only have one signature. Okay. All right, now this time, we're going to have Mr. David Plumridge to come up. You will state your name again, your address and everything.
Thank you, I'm David Plumridge. I live with my wife, Jocelyn, at seven twenty-four, O.B. Governor. I'd first like to thank Mike for putting item number seventeen on the agenda and the Commissioners for addressing it, as well as the chief for helping me put together the relevant information that I think will help you, the Commissioners, make an informed decision when this comes to the table. This is not only a safety issue, but a financial issue as well, I believe. Years ago, the town passed, I wrote this down so I can get all of it out and not waste a lot of time. Years ago, the town passed an ordinance raising the speed limit from thirty-five miles an hour to forty-five just west of the pier to just before the West End Gate. This change takes place from October first through March thirty-first, inclusive each year. And I've given all the Commissioners the relevant information the chief helped me get, so you can see this on GS twenty-one four-one B and Holden Beach Code of Ordinance Schedule One under speed limits. When this action was taken, presumably as a time-saving measure, we had far less traffic on the island and drivers were less distracted. We didn't have cell phones then. The reality is, we have considerable more traffic on and off-season, which includes vehicular, pedestrian, bikes and golf carts, and drivers are definitely more distracted. The posted speed limits are not always adhered to either. Thirty-five becomes forty-five, forty-five becomes fifty or fifty-five. And we even have on record through the police department speeds in excess of sixty miles an hour on the island, on Ocean Boulevard. The state originally posted the speed limit at thirty-five miles per hour because this is recognized as the maximum speed limit considered to be safe in a residential area. And that is stated in GS twenty-one four-one B subsection, subsection one. Therefore, the state will not participate in the construction of crosswalks where the posted speed limit is in excess of thirty-five miles an hour. State law also prohibits the use of golf carts on any road where the speed limit is posted in excess of that thirty-five mile per hour. The town's seasonal speed limit change causes a disproportionate treatment of our citizens and visitors simply because of the sight of the arbitrary line they live in travel. The fact of the matter is, the maximum speed possible, that you could possibly save is one minute. That's if you started at forty-five where the sign first appears just past the pier just before the West End Gate. That's if you could do that. I've tried it a number of times and rarely can you make it all the way without, it's just unlikely that you won't hit traffic, bike riders, people crossing the street. There's a lot of construction vehicles that are on the sides of the roads, so it's unlikely that you can make it and save that minute if that's all that important to you. So I'm therefore requesting that the Board of Commissioners and Commissioners make this section of the island safe for all residents and our visitors year-round and clear the way to have the state create and pay for the walks throughout the island, up and down Ocean Boulevard. I ask that you vote on the ordinance and shall have the speed limit on Ocean Boulevard set at thirty-five miles per hour year-round in the area of S R one-one-one-six, Ocean Boulevard, east and west, from its western terminus to its eastern terminus excluding any and all seasonal limitations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I say, that information that I referenced is all in that act that I handed out.
Thanks. Number seven. We have discussion and possible award of contract with the vacuum sewer system number three upgrade. We have Mr. Green here and Public Works Director, Mr. Clemmons. Mr. Clemmons, would you like to speak at this time?
I've included a memo to the board regarding the contract award. Mr. Green has recommended that the contract be awarded to T.A. Loving with an associated budget amendment in the amount of four hundred and seven thousand dollars. The bid opening was held December the nineteenth. We've received three bids. Those are attached to the memo. That budget amendment for four hundred and seven thousand eight and eighty-eight dollars is necessary to provide the adequate funding for the initial budgeting and award of the contract plus the procurement of the associated town-provided vacuum pumps equipment, also known as the SKID, in addition to the SCADA equipment, which is the system control and data acquisition equipment. So if the board wishes to award the contract tonight, you need to do two things. Award the contract and approve the associated budget amendment for four hundred and seven thousand eighty-eight dollars.
Mr. Town Manager, I'm new, so I'm going to ask a question. That four hundred and seven thousand, is that above what we have in the budget or is that just out?
That's correct. We actually predicated our budget on last year's estimate. We hadn't quite finished it out, you know? We've had some additional engineering for sound suppression evaluations and also the extra equipment that we need to buy. But yes, the amount is four hundred and seven thousand dollars above what was budgeted previously.
I move that we award the contract for the vacuum sewer system three upgrade to T.A. Loving as specified by Leo Green.
My second.
Any discussion?
At point of order, ma'am.
Yes.
You must approve the budget amendment too. Did I miss that?
No, you don't. I was going to do that after we, you want to do it both at the same time?
You need to do it concurrently. Because you have to have the funds appropriated before you can award the contract.
I also, I also move that we accept the budget ordinance number twenty oh one, ordinance amending ordinance nineteen ten.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I say that I don't think anybody's happy with paying four hundred thousand dollars more than was anticipated, but we know that the price of doing business has gone up considerably since we did it. The difference between the Loving bid and the next lowest bid is just about eighteen thousand dollars. And Loving was the contractor that did the work on the proceeding. And as far as I understand, they did a good job and it was a seamless transition from the old system to the new system. So I think that despite not being happy about spending that much money, nobody argues that it's not a necessity and we should just go forward and approve it.
Any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. This time, we'll call Mr. Jeremy Dixon, our police chief. Bring us a lot of good news.
No news is good news, right?
Correct.
So, our December report is good for this time of year. We don't have a lot going on. The only thing I want to mention is the east end of the beach around Doonscape area, we had a couple of cars that were broken into. So, we not saw those yet, they've not been closed, but we've not had any more reports, and that was towards the end of January. We did have a witness that ID'd a vehicle in that area that we've been looking for and probably scared them off, so we've not had any more reports in that area. But if you see anything, east or west, but especially the east end, if you see anything, follow us immediately so we can check it out. But we did have a couple of vehicles broken into. Other than that, that's the only thing we've had going on. The crime has been very low this winter. We're very happy about that. Trying to do a very proactive job to keep it that way. And then the only other thing that I would like to mention is water leaks. It may not sound like a police emergency, but just a public service announcement. The temperature when I got in my truck this morning was thirty-one degrees and we actually had at least one house that I know of today that a pipe froze and it thawed out and it was leaking, so we got that cut off. Tonight, it's going to be down to twenty-nine. So we're getting into that time of year where stuff's going to start freezing on us. So, winterize, when you're living in your house, don't winterize it, but look out for your neighbors' houses, mention to your neighbors' friends, you know, make sure their house is right and cut the water off. If you have any questions, comments or concerns, I'll be glad to answer them if I can.
Jeremy, were the vehicles locked that were broken into?
They were locked, and that is a common theme over here. Most of the people who are going into cars, they walk out of the house, they pull on a handle. If your door's locked, ninety-nine percent of the time, they're going to move to the next one. It takes a lot of effort and makes a lot of noise to bust a window out. I don't know if anybody's ever tried it, but it's more difficult than you think. So most of the time, they're going to pull the handle and keep pulling. So, the big thing you can do is lock your doors, make sure your neighbors are locking their doors. Good question. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine on our agenda. Discussion and election of chairman to the audit committee. This time, we're going to let the town clerk take over.
Per town ordinance, the board has to choose a member of the board to be the chair. In the beginning of the meeting, the board actually passed the ballots and they selected Woody to serve as the audit chair.
Okay. Congratulations.
You really think so?
Yes, sir. Okay. Next. Discussion and selection of audit committee members.
The board is to choose two to four members of the public to serve on the committee. I also have the ballots for that. Does the audit chair want to say anything before I announce? Or do you want to announce mayor pro temp? The mayor usually says it, I will hand it to you.
Okay. That's Flachow. We have Mr. Mark Flachower, Ms. Janine Richmond, Jeff Tansel and Anthony Chivoni are going to be our new members. Okay, our next item is discussion and possible nomination of member to fill the alternate member vacancy on the planning and zoning board. There again, we have our town clerk.
We had a vacancy due to Commissioner Tyner being on this board, so the board voted and...
Our new member will be Mr. Stu Apple. Congratulations. Do us a good job. Item number twelve. Discussion and direction of the two thousand twenty draft of suggested rules of procedure for the Town of Holden Beach Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Pat.
Yes, I have volunteered to take the standard rules of procedure and put on top the things that were different in the town's rules of procedure, amending them somewhat for things that I knew that either we were hoping to improve or in some cases, taking some things out that did not seem appropriate. The biggest changes that I think people need to come to grips with or the biggest items that we need to agree on are at the end that are about public address to the board. I would not propose that we spend time at this meeting, but rather wait until February, also after we all get our training again on the, you know, what it is to be a Board of Commissioner member, so that you have in mind some of the training that you'll get before we make decisions on this document. Gives everybody another several weeks as well to take a look at it and digest it, particularly after you have that training course, which does kind of walk us through, you know, how you're supposed to do things. So, it's in front of you. If anybody had any specific questions that they wanted to ask right now, why I did certain things, I'm glad to answer them, but I would really propose that we mainly put it off until February.
Okay.
So, does anybody have any questions or?
No, I had a couple of questions earlier, but I emailed Pat and she explained what was in here.
Okay.
Feel free to do that if you have any questions about what do you mean by something or is there a mistake here, and I'll answer them before the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. Item number fourteen. Discussion and possible action on a more formal procedure for the Board of Commissioners' request for actions to the town manager or town attorney.
Did you skip thirteen?
You skipped thirteen.
Just go back now. We've got a resolution there.
That's right, there you go.
Resolution twenty dash oh one. Resolution of the Town of Holden Beach, North Carolina concerning the process and format for Board of Commissioners' request for recommendations from advisory boards, committees and recommendations received.
This will be the third time that I have had this directive and example of the type of form that we could use for requests for recommendations and feedback. There have not been public comments made, so at this point, I believe that we are ready and willing to give this a try. The January twenty twenty document, January twenty twenty form. There has been only one discussion with me by another board member on the actual form itself that under the Advisory Board Advisory Committee recommendation, we add, we simply add for clarification as required by the January twenty twenty document entitled Directive for Town of Holden Beach Board of Commissioners' Request for Recommendations to Advisory Boards or Committees. That is easily done. So I would actually then propose unless someone has something in particular that they feel is not appropriate in the resolution or needs to be added or changed, that we actually approve this resolution so that we can start following this procedure starting next month.
Discussion?
Give me a second. Wait, that's our mic.
I haven't actually, I didn't actually say I moved. I was recommending we do it.
I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty dash oh one.
Second.
Any discussion?
I actually think this is a very good idea because you know how communication is sometimes. What you say and what somebody hears is two different things.
Correct.
And I think particularly, you know, when we're asking for some specific work to be done that either may cost money or time, you know, whether it's the lawyer or whether it's town manager, that we need to be very crisp in what we're asking for so that when it comes back, we know what we're getting.
Okay, we have a...
Are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
They got it again, we're good to go. All right, now we can go to fourteen. Discussion and possible action on a more formal procedure for the Board of Commissioners' request for actions to the town manager or town attorney. Commissioner Pat.
Okay, this is again, just to try and, let's just say, capture what we want more clearly so that there is not confusion when we give a direction to the town manager or the town attorney, that we actually can take the time to, you know, capture the specifics. Sometimes it helps to remember that we need to actually make very clear amongst ourselves what our ask is before we move on to the next agenda item. So, very much like making a request to a board, this is for specific requests for activities by the town manager and attorney. This, after discussion with the town clerk and town manager, we felt it didn't need a resolution. It simply needs the agreement of the members of the board that we accept that this is how we are going to make our requests in future. I, of course, always say that if we start using this and we find it doesn't work or if it needs some tweaking and amending, we can change it at any time. But I think that this will help us greatly in making our asks clearer from the beginning to our town manager and to our town attorney.
All right, I'll make a motion that we adopt the formal procedure for the Board of Commissioners' request to actions to the town manager or town attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On item fifteen, Mr. Sullivan is going to address that question.
As I stated earlier, the purpose of adding this to agenda was at the request of some people who said that they would like to speak at the beginning of the meeting, and the only way we could do that is to have an agenda item. There is plenty of information concerning this particular issue on the town board. The town has been involved in this since the beginning, but the last day for public comments on the proposal is the thirty-first of January. And since I was going to put this on the agenda, I thought it would be a good time for the board to authorize the town employees to do whatever the town employees deem necessary without needing to call a special meeting of the board. So, the proposal, I propose the following motion. The Board of Commissioners of the Town of Holden Beach authorize the town manager and town employees to take all actions they deem necessary to prepare a response in opposition to the proposed inlet hazard area plan by the conclusion of the public comment period, which is currently January thirty-first, twenty twenty, and that are permitted by North Carolina law without further Board of Commissioners' approval.
Second.
Ready, any discussion?
Just what I had said earlier. This just allows the town staff to continue doing what they've been doing without the need to, if something should arise that's unexpected, they won't have to call a special meeting and it'll make it more fluid and easier to complete the task.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I, can I make?
All opposed?
I don't get a vote, but can I make a follow-on comment?
Yes, you may.
Just, it may have not been well advertised because we've been pretty busy up here, but it's been our intent all along for a long time to absolutely refute the Coastal Resources Commission's new inlet hazard areas, inlet hazard area rules and erosion rates as are currently proposed. Town staff, primarily Mr. Evans and myself, we've been aware of this issue for years now and been engaged vigorously with the coastal management staff and the members of the Coastal Resources Commission to voice our concern over technical issues for a long, extended, repetitive period of time. In fact, we've had our eyes on this issue since its epic fail in twenty-ten, which we ardently facilitated. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to do the same. I can't speak for the, for other individual board members, but I am aware that Mayor Holden has expressed his concerns on several occasions to various property owners, real estate agents, interests and members of the Coastal Resources Commission. Staff has attended Coastal Resources Commission's meetings religiously over the past several years as this issue has attempted to become formulated. It hasn't been until this winter that the Division of Coastal Management has been able to articulate, am I being timed? Has been able to articulate a real proposal when it was rolled out in earnest over the holidays, just before the holidays. Mr. Evans has personally and formally addressed the Coastal Resources Commission at the last two meetings. Mr. Evans has personally and formally addressed the Coastal Resources Commission at the last two meetings and prior to himself vigorously inserted himself into the Coastal Resources Advisory Committee's dialogue to include presentation to the science panel on the matter. I've updated this Board of Commissioners on several occasions and, in fact, raised the issue at the HBPOA meeting recently. There are a host of problems with the proposals, the least of which is the manner in which it's been rolled out. Staff has had to go on the equivalent of a snipe hunt in order to chest up on the process. And in fact, if it wasn't for Mr. Evans bulldogging the issue, the workshops at Bolivia, Brunswick County, Ocean Isle, and Holden Beach probably would not have occurred. I can say they would not have occurred if him hadn't have been bird dogging it. To those workshops, Holden Beach was well represented in Bolivia. Staff, elected officials, and property owners made up more than half of the two dozen or so people there. Likewise, myself, Assistant Town Manager Ferguson, Mr. Evans, and Commissioner Kwiatkowski attended the Ocean Isle workshop, which probably had about thirty five people there, mostly from Ocean Isle. And as far as the Holden Beach attendance, I'll ask who didn't attend? We had over ninety people there. Congressman Rousers, Representative Chance Lambeth, who Kristin and I met with for over an hour prior to the meeting, Representative Isler was in attendance, five members of the Holden Beach Board of Commissioners, and the list just goes on to include a Coastal Resources Commission member. They know that there are problems with the inlet hazard areas as proposed. At the other meetings in Bolivia and Ocean Isle, they had one person to show up, and they had three to show up here. It's, they know it's wrong. They had their major policy guy, they had the technician, and they had a backup catcher. Brunswick County, the Brunswick County manager has communicated we had proposed that the county adopt a resolution in support of our opposition, in fact Brunswick County's opposition to the implementation of the inlet hazard areas. My conversation with him, he chose to write a letter instead of having the commission act on it. They had some scheduling issues, and he thought it more prudent to just go the very fastest route. I haven't seen that, but I have been assured that that will happen before the suspense date of thirty first. Again, it is my intent and has been all along to proceed with vigor and provide comments to the contrary regarding the inlet hazard area. Thank you for go ahead and clearing the way so that there will be no doubt that the town of Holden Beach, this just not, does not work for the town. Thank you to the many comments and the assistance that we've received since the public meeting last week and prior to that. As to a schedule for getting that work done and a letter submitted, we hope to finalize that by the end of the week and final release of that letter to the Coastal Resources Commission early next week, but certainly before the deadline of the thirty first of January. At present, we're pretty close, but we've actually asked Fran Way of Applied Technology, our coastal consultant engineer, to provide some additional coastal engineering perspectives so that we can crystallize our position to the fullest extent. That's all I have to say.
Item number seventeen. Discussion pertaining to the speed limit on Ocean Boulevard. I have Mr. Sullivan.
Again, this is another item. Mr. Plumbridge spoke on it a few minutes ago where some of the residents raised it. I think it's, it's an issue that we should have some discussion on. And it's an issue that we, we can decide pretty simply whether we want to make the change or not. Both Chief Dixon and Tim Evans have some information that pertains to what we would either have to do or gain from making the change. And I would say it's a, it's a pretty simple matter. It's thirty five miles an hour during the season. It goes up to forty five out of the season. If we want the streets to be marked, the crosswalks to be marked by the Department of Transportation because they made it clear to the town that the town can't do that on its own, you need their approval that we would have to lower the speed limit. It costs, it'll take an extra minute to get from point A to point B if we do have the lowest speed limit all year round. But I think Chief Dixon will speak about the impact that a pedestrian and a motor vehicle have at forty five miles per hour as opposed to thirty five miles per hour. And it'll be for us to decide whether it's more important to pick up that minute or to consider the possible damage that can arise from an accident of forty five miles an hour. So with that, Chief, if you'd like to make your presentation?
I've had, as you saw, I've had several members of the community come speak to me and working with Tim on the crosswalk stuff. Done extensive research on the speed limits. And I could go on about this honestly for hours, but I'm going to keep this very short and leave it to four main points. And completely unbiased, I'll let you make the decision from there. But the statistics on vehicles versus pedestrians, a vehicle versus a pedestrian at thirty miles per hour has a forty five percent death rate. If you increase the speed limit, that's thirty miles an hour. If you increase the speed limit to forty miles an hour, the death rate goes up to eighty five percent. So just that ten mile an hour difference is almost double the death rate. The stopping distance is a difference of seventy nine foot. So from slowing down from forty five to thirty five mile an hour, your stopping distance is decreased by seventy nine feet. The time distance from Greensboro Street to the West End Guard Shack down there is a minute and sixteen seconds is the actual number. And then as Mr. Plumley said, depending on traffic, it may take even longer than that. But if you had a clear straightaway, the difference in thirty five to forty five is a minute and sixteen seconds. And then, of course, the lower speed, reducing it to thirty five, would make the golf carts inclusive on that end of the island, whereas at forty five miles an hour, they are not. So those are four main points. Like I said, I could go on with statistics and stuff forever, but I'm not going to do that. And that's what I have for you so you can make a decision from there. If you have questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Jeremy, the, the death rate at thirty miles per hour?
At thirty miles an hour is forty five percent.
Okay.
And at forty miles an hour is eighty five percent.
Got it. Thank you.
And that is from the...
Have we had any problems?
We, I'll tell you the truth. We have, we have not had a vehicle versus pedestrian in the forty five mile an hour zone.
Since six, since this was implemented?
I can't say that. But since my time here, I cannot remember one. I have not gone all the way back through our records. I have not heard of one. But I have been here since two thousand and seven, and we've not had one. So to be honest, we have not had one down there.
I've got a question for you, Jeremy. By being in a forty five mile an hour zone, you said that the crosswalks would never be available to be marked by the DOT, and I've heard a lot of people voice some, you know, concern on that, and they want them marked. So that would never be a possibility in a forty five mile an hour zone, period.
Tim can answer that question better, but from the research, I've understood that that is correct.
The criteria, one of the policies for actually permitting the crosswalk is that it can't be higher. Speed limit cannot be higher than thirty five. That's the internal policy. There's about six criteria that have to be met. We've identified four locations. Of those four locations, I think three of them are in that area that gets forty five miles an hour. And while they may approve them, they're not going to allow them until it's thirty five. As I understand from ladies, that's what you're like, are application.
My next question would be, if we do lower the speed limit, are we going to be able to get that done? Are they going to be allowed?
Well, it's my understanding from the, if I had to say from the application, I'd say yes, they're going to be allowed because we meet every single criteria for having crosswalks. We have the right number of houses, parking is on the opposite side of the road. We've got the density, we've got the location of walkways on the other side. So far, the criteria for, and for the number of houses, all six of those criteria will be meet. There's not a single one that doesn't meet. The only one thing we didn't meet was their policy criteria of thirty five miles an hour. So I'm going to send her an email, depending on what y'all do, you know, I mean, letting her know that because our discussion was, was that, you know, it went down during the summer and up during the, I think during the winter, and it would still be marked. In other words, I was trying to buy a seasonal walkway, but it's still marked. It can't unmark it. So, you know, our discussion was pretty much like that now, from what I understood.
Now, Tim, to be clear, there's only four authorized crosswalks?
Yeah, we only have four that we can find that'll meet that criteria that's necessary for, to meet that.
Yeah, but I mean, doesn't, doesn't the DOT determine where the crosswalks will be?
No, what they do is, they get, they have a criteria. We have to go out and find that criteria that would meet it, and those are the locations that would meet that criteria. And so then we, we put it on the map, we present it to them, they review it for accuracy, and then they will approve them or not approve them. I turned them in, I won't say probably a month ago. She told me that they were backed up, and it could be as much as two to three months before they got to review them. But I've had, I've been conversing with her, I think, since twenty fifteen. The original was none, no, no. And then something happened. They started popping up. Then David saw how much of them went down. Then they started popping up at Ocean Isle, and suddenly the criteria just changed. And she explained it to me that they had a director change, I think.
Right.
And that changed the policies. But I've been in contact. We've been trying to get something like this done for a while.
What's in addition to the thirty five miles an hour that I guess you have to have some more criteria to meet?
The definite criteria you have to meet is you've got to have a minimum of two hundred and fifty residential units that's serving that, that walkway. Okay, that's one. The second one is, is that if you've got any parking anywhere near those walkways, it has to be located on the opposite side of the road. So pedestrians have to cross. And so that's number two. Shoot, that one right here, I guess I could read them, quick trying to guess at it. There's a, it says a location where pedestrians must cross, it has to be due to limited beach access points, which we don't have a problem with that. The location where parking is not available at or on the same side of the road in beach access, which limits this, this end somewhere. The location where number of residential units, they have to exceed two hundred and fifty. So we have to break them up where we have at least that many. Then there was a, it only has to meet, by the way, it only has to meet four of these. It says a location where, I mean, a location where crash records warrant the escalation. So it says location where significant number of handicapped or senior seniors cross the street, well, our sidewalk, which is handicap accessible, is on the other side of the street. So that's a big one. That really helps. And then the location part of the local adopted pedestrian plan, where our sidewalks on the other side of the street. So we're, we're pretty much meeting everything but one. We only had to meet four.
It was in hopes, the question was in hopes that we could get more than four. So I would want to look for some other areas.
I think what we need to do is get three. I know that we're in the process. The, there's, there's a process going on whereby we're trying to fix some of these walkways. And because some of them aren't handicapped, that could be an issue, but we're trying to fix some of these walkways. We're trying to identify where walkways need to be and some don't need to be. So I think that we need to pick this criteria. Now, we're not going to be able to borrow from them in the future. Not going to be able to borrow the two hundred and fifty units. You've got to remember, we only have a little less or a little more than twenty three other units on the island. And of that, there's a third of them over there, so when you start breaking down the numbers, they got to break down a lot. One of them is Jordan Boulevard. And Jordan Boulevard is based particularly because the parking's over there, we get all the units on that end. That, you understand, we could use everything that's down in here and up this way to the next one over there. So we, Jordan Boulevard is very important to get a crosswalk.
Yeah, but I, I would, I would venture the opinion that should y'all facilitate getting this, these first ones done, that we could enter into a discussion with them to talk about our seasonal population being a requirement on, on meeting some of those headcount things.
That actually went out in the letter. The estimated, we used, Kamalane used estimates for, I use those numbers.
Awesome.
Just to try to raise our ability. So they have a number already.
So we just have a discussion tonight, or?
Just discussion.
Okay. Well, I had the opportunity to have breakfast with a number of residents this morning that it's expressed displeasure in it going from forty five to thirty five. So I think if we are considering doing something like this, we need to publicize it. Maybe ask Heather to send out an email to everybody that's on the list saying, you know, what's your thoughts on it? Maybe get HBPOA to do a poll, but I think we need to get some more input before we make a decision. Because for as many people that want to drop it, there's just many people that don't want to drop it.
HBPOA already did a poll.
On the speed limit?
Yes, they published it in the same, same article, the survey, when they did the questions for us to... It was strong. I think it was five to one in favor of not lowering it. It was roughly seventy, seventy five percent to fifteen percent.
Any more discussion?
Are we going to carry this over then to the next meeting? To allow, to allow public comment? To allow more public comment?
Yes.
Can we, and once again, I'm new here, so three of us here are new. Can we ask Heather to send out an email asking people to give us their input? Is that appropriate? Or do they just come to the next meeting and express their pleasure or displeasure?
I guess it can be either come to the next meeting or send the town clerk your opinion. The problem is when, when we're getting messages just fired to some of the commissioners or not, it gets very difficult to kind of keep track. Sending in a written comment if you can't come to the clerk or come to the meeting and, and give comment, both are appropriate. If they send messages to us, it gets a little bit more confusing.
Yes, I agree.
So, Mr. Town Manager, can we?
Here's, here's, here's an example of what y'all probably want to do is look back at the rules that y'all just adopted on giving directions to the board and figure out what you want to do and let us know what we're supposed to be doing.
Well, it's, and it's a little bit difficult, it's a little bit difficult to use it on the very day that you have, that you have accepted it.
I, I just, I just heard Mr. Sullivan say we're going to carry it over to the next meeting for discussion. So, you know, we advertise, those agenda packages are put together and they're advertised as part of our way of doing business.
It's the next meeting discussion or discussion and actions?
Well, why don't you have breakfast with these people you spoke to today and get them to spread the word?
Gentlemen, a little bit of a lesson that if we are going to change an ordinance, it must be reduced to writing.
That's right.
And come to, come to this board before we can take an action. And even then, the first time that it comes, if we're, if we are four out of five of us in agreement, we can pass it. Otherwise, you go to the second reading and then it only takes the typical majority. Usually, we let ordinances be out there for two go rounds. Although when it's pretty cut and dried, we can do it with one. But we can't take any action until we have an ordinance. So unless we are willing at this point in time to ask the town manager to have staff draft a proposed ordinance, all we will do next time is put it on the agenda again for simple discussion and comment. Okay?
Everybody good with that?
What is it you're doing?
I think we're simply carrying it over...
Carrying over and talk about.
Yes, so that the public can comment.
Okay. Okay, got it. Okay, cool.
Item eighteen, discussion and possible action on classification and pay study and the updated personnel policy created by the Management and Personnel Services Group. Commissioner Pat.
Hi, um. This is a carryover from the last board, and I, I personally, I, I'm, I think it's, it's unfortunate that we didn't take actions as the last board because it throws three of you in with a big book that you were not there for, two presentations by this company and for the discussions. But I will say that we have had all of this information since September. We've had two explanations since then and had question and answer. And there are a number of items in he- in here that we actually do need to take some decisions on. Um, this was asked for by the previous board, and it was found that our classifications needed to be updated and our pay ranges needed to be adjusted. And there were three different options that were proposed to us as possible ways of changing the pay grades that were being given. Um, there was, at one point, a four to one vote by the board that we would go ahead and approve option one, which is the preferred option by personnel expert. Preferred option when you understand and digest all of this and look at how you can best take your pay and get rid of what is called compression. So option one was clearly the best option. Unfortunately, at the next meeting, um, two of the commissioners who had previously voted yes reversed it and said they preferred to not do it at this point in time. And so, um, it was undone. So we have class specifications, we have a pay plan. We have option one, which had previously been identified as the best option, which will require if we put it in, into, um, put it in place as of January first, we obviously will have to do a budget ordinance, which had been already put together by the town manager, so it's back here. And then at the very end, there is also the personnel policy in this. So we have five items. Now, what I would say right now is if, if people want more time to digest the personnel policy, and you will see, I had some comments on some things on the personnel policy. People want more time to digest some of the things in the personnel policy itself, I would imagine it would be possible for us to put off approving that until next month. However, the class specification, the pay plan, and our salary ranges are rather necessary. Uh, we do have a staff opening. It's difficult to really perceive, for the town manager to proceed to hire when things are, um, a little bit in limbo. Again, we've had this in front of us for a number of months. Um, I would actually propose that we go through item by item if there are any questions, but that we take, we take actions at least on A, B, C, and D. And C and D go together, because if you approve option one, the ordinance that goes with it, as the town manager reminded me, um, has to be voted at the same time.
I was actually at both the meetings last year, the presentation and the, the subsequent discussions. Uh, and I have gone through all these materials during, when the presentation actually occurred, so. I mean, I have a pretty good understanding of it. I have obviously years of HR experience in my previous jobs. I think the consultant appears to have done a very good job in designing the cla- pay classifications, the pay ranges, personnel policy, I read the minutes from the previous meetings to see, you know, what your concerns were. I, I, I mean, I really don't have any concerns here. I, I, I do believe we need to go on and adopt, uh, at least like you said, A through D. Uh, if the per- if the town manager has no issues with the personnel policy or nobody else does, I'd say go ahead, let's do E. But, you know, I, quite honestly, it's very apparent from the study that was done last year, and once again, I was here for both the presentations and, and questions, that we need to address the wage compression that the town has. We need to get a fair and competitive wage for our employees. Uh, there's nothing worse than working at a job where you feel like you're not being paid a fair wage. Now, none of us get paid what we think we're worth, but you want to feel like you, you've got, you've got a fair wage and it's a competitive wage. And when you're in a small environment like the town of Holden Beach, where there's limited, uh, upward progression, I mean, nobody can be the ni- nobody can get promoted to town manager till we either get rid of David or he dies or something, you know, so.
Woody.
I know, but I mean, it's limited, there's limited mobility here. There's only one building inspector, one, um, one Christie, so I mean, there's a lot of, there's, there's just not a lot of availability for folks to move up like you would in a large corporation and have ways to, to increase your salary. So I think, number one, getting the pay right, making sure it's fair and competitive, realizing that it's hard to attract good employees to a small town like Holden Beach. And then if we do want to, to, uh, get new employees, we need to make sure we're paying them a fair wage with good benefits so we can get them, because it's, it's just hard in a small town or a small organization to get people.
Uh, you mentioned that, you know, even approving the personnel policy. Now, I will refer people to page seventy-two of the packet because since September, I have had, again, um, these couple pages, seventy-two and seventy-three out there about things in the personnel policy that I actually had, had opinions on that needed to be changed. And again, it was never discussed by the previous board because decisions were, were put off. Um, in the personnel policy, as I say, uh, there is a proposal for longevity pay. This has not been at the town of Holden Beach, has not been in the town of Holden Beach till now. Um, my own, and this is my own personal opinion, and again, I have kind of years of being a manager um, and dealing with personnel, that, um, longevity pay isn't actually an incentive for enhanced performance. And that I, since we haven't been giving it, I don't see that it really adds something and that perhaps the amount of money that would be used could be better applied to other parts of compensation. Um, I had a brief, uh, comment on a tuition assistance program, simply saying that we add that, uh, full-time employees requiring assistance must have achieved at least and achieved standards of evaluation. Um, again, that's a fairly common thing in companies. Um, the section from page twenty-nine on vacation leave accrual rate, I was simply pointing out that, um, there had been a change that actually disadvantaged some employees and that the two personal days per year that had been given in the town, uh, should be reinstated. Um, and it's just, those are, those are like your, you pick your holiday days, and it's use it or lose it, but that, that those be kept, and that would then change the, uh, days accrued per year. But again, that was in line with what we had done before. And then the final one was a fairly significant change, I understood. Um, but it was proposed that, um, unused vacation can be accumulated only to a level of thirty days, which is in place. But at that point, unused vacation days will automatically roll into accumulated sick leave. Um, and that is kept for an indefinite period of time, converted upon retirement for service credit. Now, my, my reservation with that is that the town encourages people to use vacation. And I am not saying it has happened in the town of Holden Beach, but I have seen it happen before where people get to a certain point and they stop taking their vacation so that they can roll it towards retirement. Um, a town that is saying to its employees, "We believe that you should take your vacation," I think could simply put a limit on how much you can roll into the sick leave so that you say you can roll up to half of your vaca- we want you to take your vacation, but when you cannot, you can roll half of it into sick leave in any year. And that is a difference compared to what is written in the policy. Um, so, those were really the things that needed to be discussed um, before deciding on accepting the policy or not. Again, I can understand if everybody says, "Why don't we put this part off until February?" If the town manager doesn't have a problem with delaying personnel policy another month, or we can discuss it now and make decisions. But we do need, I believe we need to make decisions on A, B, C, D.
Any more discussion?
What's everybody's pleasure?
Do I have a motion?
Oh, well, okay, um.
Make a motion.
I, I move that we accept as written the class specifications and the pay plan in the MAPS document. And that we agree with implementation of option one for pay, um, retroactive to January first, twenty twenty, and approve the corresponding ordinance twenty oh two, um, amending ordinance nineteen ten, revenues and appropriations ordinance for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes?
And now I would simply ask, do we want to address the items in the personnel policy tonight? Or would you prefer to have more time? Town manager?
Um, I, I would comment on that. I mean, I've discussed these with you and also with Heather and her, and her ancillary functions as human resources clerk. And, uh, the, your, your suggestions are entirely palatable. They are really in keeping with a modern personnel, uh, program. I think that, um, um, there are some insertions of, of corporate how-to in here that are, that are positive, and we can work with this. I would remind the board that the personnel policy that we currently have is horribly outdated. So I have no problem whatsoever with, um, with, uh, pulling your changes as recommended into the, um, the personnel policy that's before you.
Thank you. Um, that being the case, um, I would actually move then that we accept the personnel policy with the changes that have been, um, proposed, um, in the packet on pages seventy-two and seventy-three.
That's your motion?
That's your motion, second.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion?
I have looked over your suggested changes, and, and I'm, I'm like David, per excuse of the town manager, but they seem to be very appropriate and are what you would see in more modern personnel policy. So I'm, I'm good with them.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes? Item number nineteen, discussion and possible action on our pointer sprue contract. We're going to turn that over to our assistant town manager.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the town retained pointer sprue last year. Um, they've been our advocates at the federal level for a year now. We received their contract to continue those services, and there was a price increase for that contract. In order for us to execute that contract, the monthly retainer will increase by seven hundred and fifty dollars per month to finish out this budget year. That would require a budget amendment in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars. Um, the contract for this year was in the agenda packet, and, um, the motion that you would need is to approve both the contract and the attached budget amendment. I will take a few minutes to talk about what they've done this year for the town. Um, there was an easement issue with, our easements on the east end that we were doing for, um, our SDI five permit. And they did work with us and our town attorney at the time on that issue for lots that were underwater. They've been an advocate for federal beach nourishment funds. Um, part of that is, um, Holden Beach pulling out of the Brunswick Beaches fifty-year project and having our own project. So that was through supplemental funding, that we were looking for a study to come our way. Inlet crossing federal money and legislation to revise the least cost beneficial placement to improve our position. Um, if Oak Island wants to do the Lockwood Folly Crossing sand, which they tried to do last year. So it come into our side versus that side. Those are things they've worked on this year. Um, as far as long-term projects, they recently helped Topsail Beach. They worked with, for them for three years, and they were awarded a quarter of a billion with a B dollars. So, um, if you guys want to retain their services, we would need to have you pass the contract and the budget amendment.
Did we get the study?
We did not get the study. We found out that the first round of funds, we have not. Um, I think you guys will find out a little bit more about that in your report from them for this month, because that's pretty new information, and I don't know if the town manager wants to comment anymore on any additional supplemental.
There's a, there's another supplemental round coming out. As you may know, the president's budget will be, um, out in a couple of weeks, and that, those are the types of things that, uh, Pointer Spruill will be engaging on and looking out for our interest in those matters.
And one additional comment I'll just make from, um, personal perspective, and Commissioner Kukowski may have some additional perspective on that. She joined, um, David and I last year in March at the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association meeting. As part of that meeting, they, um, do trips to the hill where they take large groups of people. So one of those groups, I went with the Corps. Um, we met with Corps headquarters. There were probably nineteen to twenty people that went to that meeting that were from other municipalities, organizations. But Pointer Spruill actually took a day where they carved out, and we went and met with, um, our representatives and with these organizations on the hill where it was only Holden Beach in the room. And we plan to do that again in March if their services are continued. So, we do get one-on-one with the people that are making decisions at the federal level.
Those meetings did make a difference, okay? We, we spoke, we had some pretty good conversations with Army Corps, with the Office of Management and Budget, with Rouser himself, with Tillis Amber's, um, staff. We gave them information, they gave us feedback. I mean, these things do take, these, these things do make a difference. You'll remember that in two thousand eighteen, was it two thousand eighteen? Um, well, the month before, the month before we, we did decide to go with Pointer Spruill, I put in the packet, um, a letter that was basically presenting why I believe that we should hire them. And I believe one of the things I said was, "You have to understand, things don't happen in a year." You know, when you're going to do something like this, you look for their, they, they are working, you're getting some little things, but the big things take time. For example, it took them three years working on Topsail. Um, I, I, I guess the ten percent, it's roughly a ten percent increase in the contract, right?
Yeah.
I, I, it, do we have more details about what costs are going up, or is this just sort of a standard? This is, our, our costs are just up and this is what we're doing?
Just what, that, the line in my memo is it just what they stated, adjustment in fees more accurately reflects the amount of work involved and fulfilling the responsibilities required for the commission's needs and priorities. It's going from sixty-nine seventy-five per month to. It's going from sixty-nine, seventy-five per month to the seventy-seven, twenty-five.
Frankly, I think we're getting value for the money. And again, you know, when you go into something like this, you do go into it with a multi-year. And my experience has typically been it takes three to five years to get anything done. So, you know, to terminate after one year because of a fee increase, it's sort of like not doing the lift station because the cost went up. You know, you need to do it. Switching to somebody else would not be beneficial and would be probably just throwing money away, frankly. We would have thrown all of this away. I don't like when things go up ten percent in one year. But I do see that there is value here. And I would recommend that we, we accept that we are going to keep them for another year or two, at least another year, hopefully two, and see if we can get where we need to be with their assistance. Which would mean we do approve the ordinance, which will cover the budget increase that we need to accept this increase. And then next year, our budget will go up for them, of course.
Are we, I just wanna clarify something. I think I understand, and I've spent a little bit of time trying to dive into this Corps and FEMA differentiation. Are we pursuing the fifth-year plan as a town? Or are we pursuing the fifth-year plan with the Brunswick County Beach?
Just us.
Just us?
Just us.
The contract with them specifically excludes participation as the Brunswick Beaches project.
So, they're representing just us?
The town of Holden Beach, yes.
And we are pursuing the, the plan? And that study is at no cost, is that correct?
The supplemental funds that we went for, that we didn't get in round one, that we were just talking about, and he was saying more supplemental is coming down, is at no cost to us. If we were not to get approved in this next round, then they may have other options for you at a cost. Or you could choose not to do that. That's always at the commissioner's discretion.
And, and that, that process will be fleshed out better when the president's budget comes out. And after the March meeting of the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association, is my understanding that the board, we've tentatively calendared an update on that for the board at your April meeting. So that you'll, you'll be aware of just where the supplemental funding is, what's gonna happen, and what your options are.
Did, did you make a motion when you said I recommend?
Not yet.
You said I recommend. I was, I was close.
If, if we're gonna make a motion, then we need to make the motion here plus on the ordinance to change the financing, correct?
Contracts and the budget amendment.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the, the proposed pointer sprue contract. And at the same time, approve ordinance twenty oh three, amending ordinance nineteen ten, revenues and appropriation ordinance for fiscal year two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty.
Second. Do I, I've got a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Call Mr. Mike McIntyre, tell him to go to work.
We're gonna have to.
Okay. Next, item number twenty, year-to-date financial report, Commissioner Tine.
Yeah, the, the agenda item may be, and it's my fault, the way I described it. And I may have not done it appropriately. And if I did, we can just table it to the next meeting. I think as, as a board, we are accountable for the town's financial position.
Absolutely.
And how the towns do it. And we delegate that accountability, because you can't, or excuse me, we delegate the responsibility, not the accountability. But we delegate the responsibility to the town manager as the finance officer. And I think as much money as we have going through the town, the revenues we're collecting, the money we're spending, that I think it would be very appropriate for the board to at least get a summarized view of how we're doing on budget on a quarterly basis. I know the whole budget is out there on the website for us to look at every month. But a lot of people probably don't look at it, and there's a lot of detail there. And so, I think a summarized, brief report from the town manager on how we're doing versus budget and how our fund balance is doing would be beneficial for the board, but also beneficial for the attendees. I've talked to the town manager. He has a report already prepared that he had given at previous meetings in the last couple of years. And he is much in favor of doing the update for us. So, I don't know if it's just a consensus process that he will put it on the agenda the first month after every quarter, or we need a motion, or what? So, Ms. Secretary, I'll let you.
I think, I think if we, I, I don't think we need a motion. I mean, this is, this is one of those asks to the town manager as the finance officer.
I can, I can help y'all out. I understand this one without any further direction and be glad to comply.
Thank you.
So, it's just consensus of the board?
Just consensus, we all want that and that the town manager is pleased to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Item twenty-one. Discussion and possible action on setting board objectives for the twenty-twenty calendar year. Commissioner Pat.
Okay, what we basically have to do, guys, is we have to agree a date that we can call a special meeting. If everybody is fine with the procedure we used last year, we had town, we had town staff there as well. Basically, we had, if I remember right, we had six categories. And people just wrote their objectives on sticky notes that they put into categories. You know, so you made your decision about, I wanna do this and this, this gets categorized. You can have as many as you want. And then we pull them down and we organize them and come up with a coherent list of objectives for each category. After that, the commissioners, we vote on them. We give them points. So, the first meeting is really about coming with your thoughts on objectives, writing them down, putting them up into categories. And then we, we pull it down and put all of these sticky notes into, these six all mean the same thing, these five, and write out what we believe those objectives are. The next meeting, when we actually tally up what everybody thinks the, the point total should be so that we hit priorities, we typically do as part of David's first budget meeting. Because he'll be setting up, he'll be setting up a budget schedule. So, what I really need is for all of us to agree a date in February that we can do this. And of course, if you like, one of the easiest ways to do it is everybody gives their availability for the first three weeks of February to the town clerk, and she will come back to us with dates that work. We need about two hours. We need about two hours to do the first part.
I would also suggest that y'all advise the clerk your preference for time of day. I know, you know, some folks function better in the morning than afternoon, just from prior experience.
Or in the night with a cold beer.
No.
Did I say that?
No, no.
So, each member needs to get with Heather?
You send Heather an email with your availability. And I would simply say in the first three weeks of February.
And you said the first meeting, both these were open meetings, right? Or special meetings?
All of this is open.
Okay.
All of this is open.
The first meeting is by itself. The second one, you think, would dovetail in with the first budget meeting?
That's what we did last year.
Worked good?
It worked fine.
Can Heather, can Heather send it?
David?
She'll send you a reminder.
Okay.
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 Do we need to take any action on that? We're just in?
Well, no, it's just we're agreeing, we are all agreeing that we are having a special meeting. So, no two commissioners have to ask the town clerk to set up a special meeting. We've agreed we'll have this special meeting.
Agenda item twenty-two, discussion and possible action to start the process to determine the town's future use of the recently acquired seven ninety-six Ocean Boulevard West property. Commissioner Pat.
Yes, as you know, we, the town bought that property immediately adjacent to Lift Station Three in order to provide noise buffer. And it would reduce our engineering costs. But when that proposal was made, town staff also came up with a significant list of possible uses for that building. And I think that it would be, it would, it would simply be prudent to expedite or to, to get started on deciding how to use seven ninety-six Ocean Boulevard West. My thoughts were that the most appropriate place for deciding what to do with a facility such as this would probably rest with Parks and Rec. But some, somebody needs to be, needs to be assigned within staff to come up with how we're gonna determine what the town is going to do with the building. It may be getting, first off, it may be getting our property owners' input, residents and property owners' input, different things. But, but to me, usually if we have a building that might be used for activities, it's fallen to Parks and Rec, as I've recalled, to sort of manage that in their plan. So, I was going to ask whether or not it was appropriate to hand this one over to Christie for her to work with the Parks and Rec and decide the potential uses for the building.
If, if I could suggest that you use your new procedures and formally task it to the Parks and Rec board.
You're, you're gonna make us sorry we, we decided to do the same.
I mean, you guys did the rules, you know, we're, we're just here to carry out the rules.
We can, I, I mean.
But I, I think that this, this, this one in particular fits well with that.
I can bring it to the next meeting with the appropriate request made. Go ahead.
I would suggest before we do that, I understand that whatever is going to be done to that structure can only be done up to a certain amount of money, right? We, we can only do a certain percentage and is that, is that correct?
Well, it depends on the conditions it meets. I mean, it, it, it depends on what you wanna do and, and the condition it's in and if it meets certain criteria.
So, then?
It could be a fifty percent cost evaluation that could affect what you can do there.
Okay.
Or it may not.
So, so I would say the first step would be for Tim to go do an initial inspection to let us know if, if we're in that area where it may be limited to fifty percent before we start making great plans that are gonna go more, over that, that cost.
Well, let me ask a question. Does, does this preclude or include having the house taken off the island and the shoes that leaves?
Oh, that was discussed la, okay, that was part of the discussion last year that actually if you remove the house, then you have a, you still have a potential noise.
Remove the buffer.
Okay.
Yeah, you've removed the buffer.
You've removed the buffer.
You removed, yeah, you removed the buffer. Now, okay, Tim, can you please, is part, is, is the fifty percent or not just for anything or is?
It's most likely where that house is located. Most likely. Where's Leo? Leo?
He escaped.
He left.
He got his contract.
No free advice.
It would be a short trip for me to go look at the thing, but I'm pretty sure the fifty percent is not going to affect it. Not a hundred percent, but a ninety-nine point nine percent that we're not gonna be held bound by the fifty percent rule. And it wouldn't matter anyway, you know, if you're going to go to some other type of occupancy other than a residential, because there's gonna be engineers involved and it's gonna be a different standard.
How about if we do this? How about if, if Mike suggested if we get that, get that answer certain and bring that back to the board? So, then you will have that.
Well, this is where I get into the chicken egg dilemma. Is it that the cost will partially depend on what the proposal is to use the building for? Is it, you know, so which comes first? That's, that's been my dilemma.
What, what comes first is, is, I think what you need to do is decide how you wanna use the structure. My idea is how you wanna use the structure. You didn't bring it over to my department and I'll do a full review on it and tell you whether it's possible, where the structure's at, what's located, what we're gonna need to do if you can do that. And then you can take it from there.
That, that was, yeah, see, that was sort of my thinking is first we had to define what our maybe top two uses are before Tim can give us any sort of a number. Which means to me that I can bring it next month with the proper.
I hate, I hate to say this, but.
Go ahead.
And I have to say this because you cannot, I cannot be the designer and the inspector. I cannot be the engineer. I cannot be, I can't do those things because it become a conflict of interest. That's why you need to put Christie in charge of that stuff and then have it brought to us. And then when, when we give you, say, yeah, you can do this, then you'll probably most likely have to do it like you normally would, put it out for, for a, 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 or a, or a, um, and go from there.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I guess my, my point is if we just have open-ended, what would you like to do with this property? We could get four or five different ideas that are gonna cost more than we can possibly do. So, what I was hoping you could do is say, we do, we don't have to meet a certain criteria. And we can get these, not, not doing designing, but these are the type of projects that you can do for X dollars. And then give that to people to choose from rather than just like giving a kid a Christmas list.
First thing you're gonna have to do if you're gonna go anywhere with residential, you've got to rezone it to commercial.
Yeah.
See, that's the kind of stuff that, that's gonna be bouncing around in my head for the next three days.
If you go into commercial rezoning, this appendix B, you're talking, you're talking a lot of money. I got a question for Chris. I thought in that, in number three there, that we were actually putting sound deadening material inside of that facility to take care of the noise without it going outside of those walls, so to speak.
That's correct.
I also think.
So, why don't we buy the house? I'm sorry.
Well, I didn't, I wasn't here to buy the house. I wish, I would have liked to know on the plan for buying the house, but it, I think it was to, I think it was because people would complain about the lift station being next door, whether it be noise or smell or whatever. I wouldn't wanna live beside it, and I don't think anybody else would either. But I'm thinking, you know, it's just gonna cost a ton of money. I, I can't, and this is me personally talking, I obviously don't have any input from any of you guys, and I want it, I promise you. I, I can't think of anything, 'cause we're, you're talking handicap accessible. You're talking, a house is not set up in any way, shape, or form to be turned into a commercial building easily. You're gonna be talking a substantial amount of money. And I know that house, I, I was right next to it the other day, and it's not in the best of shape now. But I don't think cars would get mad. For instance, if you put a parking lot next door that, you know, there was a little bit of noise going on and, you know, everybody knows we need more parking. So, I'm just, my question is, well, the first question is why did we buy it? That's a good one. I guess they would have just moved out if it bothered them or tried to sell it or, or whatever. But I, I don't know the situation behind that, and I'm not trying to make light of it. It's, I wouldn't, nobody would wanna live there. But I hope maybe we're not all looking to do something with that building.
We, I'll give the history of this. There is, there is noise reducing going to be done in the current lift station. But it was going to be more if we had the house there. And there was still the concern about having, you know, basically nuisance claims about noise. There was gonna be, there were gonna be issues with not having the ability to open windows in the facility. open windows, um, in the facility, things like that. The decision did save money by buying that house. It did eliminate a certain level of concern about the noise and some of the engineering challenges because of noise abatement. When we bought the house, the staff had come up with, well, you know, brainstorming, there are a list of possibilities that maybe the building could be used for, um, rather than just having it sit there, um, as nothing. And these are the kinds of things that can be evaluated, are some of those possibilities? Would they be attractive to the residents or not? Nobody was planning on trying to turn it into something, you know, remarkable, but can it have a use for the island? And that is my point of starting the process now. We can't, we don't want to take it down because it is a sound buffer and it keeps the buffer there so that there's never a question whether or not the next house has a nuisance noise problem.
How far is that next house?
It's fifty feet, probably.
Yeah, it's the, they, they do just the fifty foot lots. And of course, we, um, with lift station four, there were a lot of acoustical tests done so they noted decibel levels, you know, as you go out into the bell curve. So-
Yeah, because I guess when putting the new lift station up, it's going to be a power.
Yes, for sure.
To your point, the sound-
So-
Project further.
I'll bring something next month that's a formal request, the way we're supposed to, and turn it over. But again, there was, there were, there were some interesting ideas of what you might be able to do with that building that wouldn't necessarily cost an arm and a leg, but these have to be sorted. And if none of them are attractive to our property owners' residents or the town says that'll cost too much, then so be it. It's a buffer.
Oh.
It's an unused buffer then, rather than a used buffer.
My only concern, if we got to keep that thing standing, then that means we got to keep it up and it, I, it does, it doesn't, if we don't even fix it, we got to keep it, keep it up.
That's right.
So it's going to be in the, it's going to be in expense. Maybe we should get that thing running and see if we need it. I'd love some input on that one, though.
Agreed.
Yep.
A lot.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, it will come back next month.
Okay. Town managers' comments.
Yes, sir. Updating on where we are with our FEMA projects, Florence and Michael, as we've stated before, collectively, they're in the twenty-four million dollar range that has been announced of, and at the congressional level. We're working, every day we are working in the FEMA grants portal, our project worksheets, which is what will authorize those projects to be done. We've received the draft, drafts of them and we're going over them with a fine-toothed tongue, fine-toothed comb to make sure that everything is okay. We're now on our sixth project manager since we started fifteen months ago. That's a new one every nine weeks. It's kind of hard to keep up and keep the project manag- managers briefed up when it's a new face every nine weeks. But to that end, the most recently assigned one, we'll be in briefing them a day after tomorrow, along with the Department of Crime Control and Public Safety from North Carolina, who is the responsible agent for administering the, the FEMA money. Hurricane Dorian, it's, the estimates now are up to twelve million dollars. That's from our initial spitball of four million dollars. The reason why that has gone up so, you know, threefold so dramatically is that FEMA actually requested that we do some additional surveys out the depth of closure. When we go out the depth of closure, guess what? The amount of sand we lost goes up. So that is now being finalized as far as having the engineers report to, to become efficient. We send that in and it will take them however long it takes them to approve that, just like they did for Florence and Michael. But our, and that's for our category G, the beach damages. Our category B, which is the things we do, emergency protective measures to get ready for the storm, that reimbursement request has been finalized and submitted for review and approval. To the, what are we going to do in terms of a permit and our central reach project sand search? We've had some bad weather here with the south winds and onshore waves. They, it hadn't been conducive to run, running the bathimetry and doing the core bore. And so our surveyors are needing about a four-day window. We're hoping to get that put together, hoping to get it completed soon. And ATM's working on other elements of the permit while that is occurring. Our canal dredging project, that's an ongoing capital-type project or maintenance project that's been going on now for about twelve years successfully. We've put that, working group has assembled a couple of weeks back. The working group is composed of representatives from Heritage Harbor, Harper Acres, and Holden Beach Harbor to get ready for the upcoming budget year. And that's where we, I would say, well, how have we done, you know, what have we got going on, what's coming up, what needs to be taken care of in the upcoming year? And also to decide on what the desired level of readiness is going to be in terms of, of, do you want to have a shovel-ready permit? In order to do so, what types of assessments have to be made? As part of that process, our ongoing maintenance activities, we look at those and specifically and probably most near-in and ongoing that we've, you know, been struggling with here over the last year is Scotch Bonnet site. Our intent from day one has been to reestablish that site to its pre-dredge capabilities, which are in order of priority. Uh, the first priority is that that is a primary permitted disaster debris management area. That's the first priority for that site. Second priority is that it is a public works lay-down yard. That is what that site has primarily been used for by the staff. We've been very fortunate that we have not had a catastrophic event whereby we've had to bulldoze houses and sift through them and recon- take the lumber out of them and put the sand out on the beach. But the public works lay-down yard, that is the support provided for streets, water, sewer, and everything else that public works does. That's where that, as a central location, takes place as a matter of convenience for them. So they have been really hamstrung by the fact that that site has not been in operation, although we've had some workarounds. And lastly, the dog park. And I know that's probably going to hurt some dog park aficionados feelings, but if that is not the priority that the board wishes me to view that site and, and use it as, y'all need to tell me that those are not your priorities that you want me to carry forth on that site. We're working hard on making sure that it dries out. Just as soon as we can get it done, we'll get it back to what it was before. We've, we're supposed to have some equipment on-site tomorrow that are going to, that's going to rim ditch around it in order to attempt to keep drying the side out. Hurricane Dorian, we actually did that when that storm came through so that we were afraid we might blow the levee out when Dorian came through, so we dug a rim ditch around it then. And also to avoid any stormwater permit violations. And by the way, while we're trying to get this, this site back to normal, we have to be careful with maintaining our environmental permit and our monitoring program. We have been compliant, compliant throughout the project so far. And to that project, y'all need to remember that the Corps of Engineers jerked the rug out from under us on being able to access disposal areas for, for any type of dredging activity. There are other communities around here that have projects that are, that have been held up for three years now. Ocean Isle hasn't been able to get their project going and Sunset Beach, I don't know if they're ever going to get their project going, but we had an opportunity that we were able to obtain a grant through the shallow draft inlet fund that bore two-thirds of the cost of that million-dollar-plus project. And that was one of the management decisions that was made in order to make that project happen. I can't stress enough that safety on that site is a priority at present. It is not ready for use. It is barely safe, I won't even say it's safe for the staff to, to even go out there on it. There, I happened to be on-site yesterday and we can see where deer are attempting to walk across it, sinking down. And Chrissy, bless her heart, we all, she almost dropped out of sight just at the edge of it. So we do have it posted. We're lucky to get our boots back. We do have it posted, but please, if there's anybody that's tempted to go out there, it's, it looks like the Bonneville, Bonneville flats. It's very white, cracked and dry. It is a crust that's softer than grandmama's apple pie crust. Do not go out on it because it could be tragic. To the Lockwood-Foley inlet, to the Lockwood-Foley inlet crossing maintenance project, that project's moving along very nicely with placement of beach-compatible sand that we alluded to earlier, but the pipe, the discharge pipe is down to about bend ago now. We're expecting it to continue moving west and last another three weeks. So they should be gone here first week or so in February. I'd like to remind the public that this is a hazardous work zone and in case you aren't familiar with what, where, what that designation is, it's the signs and the orange fencing that you need to stay out of. If you don't know what the signs and the orange fencing is, it's the bulldozer, the bulldozer and a pipe about that big around that's got gray stuff coming out of it. That's the dead giveaway. Stay away from it. On a lighter note, the, we were very fortunate to secure or procure about four hundred leftover Christmas trees from local vendors and over the holidays, right after Christmas, the boy and, boy and girl scout troops from Sharon United Methodist Church, along with Mike Pearson from our beach inlet management board, who helped coach, coached them and the, our vegetation contractor, Steve Mercer, who put those cedar trees out there or the Christmas trees out there in inspection day four yesterday. They're already starting to bury up nicely and I would anticipate here, if history is a, a past indicator, that they'll be buried up by the time that the spring winds come through. So that was a win-win situation. We got those trees for nothing. All we had to do is go get them, we're able to put out some, some doom building material and got the boys and girls scouts to further their own programs. Brunswick Avenue paving, the designs and specs are prepped. Big package should go out very soon, by the end of the week. And what we're aiming for there is to have a contract award at the February Board of Commissioners meeting. Now, that is earlier, so we might have to slide it till March, but either way, our goal is to pave the western half of the Brunswick Avenue during the timeframe between Easter and Memorial Day. We need a little bit of warm weather, but we don't want the crowds to be up on top of us when that's happening. Town hall gym set, that vendor, we've returned that rental unit to the vendor. As a reminder, that generator went out a couple of days before the hurricane, so we had to get a rental unit in here. And now that we've gone through hurricane season and got through some of the winter storms, we just don't have budget for backup power. So y'all need to be aware that if, if the transformer blows, like right now, we're going to have to stop business because we don't have backup power on this building. So we've got the engineer working up a proposal for different options, you know, replace it, move it, build a new one, kind of thing. And that should be back to you either as a February or March meeting. We're going to have to have a solution in place for the upcoming hurricane season for sure. Public Beach Accessway at two eighty-nine, that construction is complete with the CAMA grant, which the CAMA grant funded, and we had to put the money upfront, so we have applied for our reimbursement. And in keeping with our, in the spirit of cooperation, when I first got here twelve, thirteen years ago, the town was actually holding its meetings in the chapel while this building was being built. And so I, it is my understanding that the chapel is getting ready to go, undergo some renovations beginning in February. We've received a request or, or notification from the chapel to that effect. And because we have a reciprocity agreement, we'll help them, they'll help us. The, the congregation or the services are going to be held in their fellowship hall, but they're going to need to use our facility for various meetings that they'll, they have on a regular basis. So we got the request from them and what we'll be doing is that the church secretary and the town clerk are going to be the ones that's responsible for scheduling these different meetings. So those, if you, if you, if you hear anything, folks that are in the church, Heather's the one that's going to be coordinating. She's the keeper of the rooms here. Run HB's activity that we had last week had about, had over a thousand people registered with seven hundred and seventy-six runners that actually finished, finished the race. Thank you for the public's patience with that. You know, we had some traffic issues. We can't bring a thousand people in here for three hours and not expect something, but we, we had no injuries. Everything went fine. There were some inconveniences, but thank you for your tolerance. And the staff is working with that race company to come up with some alternate routes next year to aid in the traffic pattern and the congestion on the boulevard. Upcoming town events, February fourteenth, Valentine's Day is the town's birthday and there will be a birthday celebration on Friday, the fourteenth, at noon. And the intent here is everybody that's been saving all that stuff up to put in time capsule, the treasure chest over here, bring it and we will actually have a small ceremony to close the time capsule and be seated. So preregister with, with the front office here by the, February the seventh at five P.M. if requested. And that's all I got.
We, we had several issues that were, 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 were a little bit, you know, had a lot of phone calls on, just like our, our lobbying company. I think it, I really think we, we, it's money well spent, okay? I gave it a little thought, but, but you know, I think overall we got, we got to stay the course with that a little while. It's going to pay dividend if we wait long enough, okay? And it is really hard, you know, it's kind of like, you don't see any lobbying firms anywhere to say, well, here's what, what we're going to do for the next twelve months. They'll give you rough ideas and preliminary stuff. But this is like, you know, I hate that you have to go that way, but it's the only way you're going to get anything out of Washington. You know, this is the way it works. I'm not saying it's right, but just me personally, I, I don't think it is. But that's how it works. So we're going to have to be willing to stay the course long enough, you know? I called the manager at Topsoil and, and he, he told me, he said, the lobbying group that you got is the same one we have. And he said, they were very instrumental in helping us to get our money from the Corps. Okay? So let's, let's give it a little time and, and, uh, before we- Okay? So let's, let's give it a little time and, and uh, before we, you know, get beaten up, you know, let, let's just, let's try and be patient with it. I had several calls about dog parks. You're not falling on empty ears here. I have a dog in my seat, okay? And I'd love nothing more than to have a little place to turn old Skunkster loose and let him run. But right, that's his name, Skunk. But right now, uh, we, we just don't have it. We're looking for options. David's working on it and, and uh, you know, we, we, we uh, we're, we're working, okay? And, and so uh, just, just be patient a little bit. Maybe something's gonna happen. And we're gonna have time where y'all can comment there, so you, you got, you'll have your filter. And, and, and uh, I think David told me before this meeting that this is the first one that Allen hasn't made.
Since I've been here.
Yeah. So uh, I mean, the man's to be commended. He, he's done a lot of great work for us, you know what I'm saying? And, and he's gonna continue to do that, but those are big shoes to step up in and, you know, right quick, like, you know what I'm saying? And I'm glad I brought this up here. Then finally said, here you go, come, hey, they wrote my notes down, you know, I said, okay. But uh, it's good to see a good crowd. Call your neighbor, you know, call, call your friends, you know, get them out. That's what governments are about. Be her. A man in the back there, I, I hear what you're saying on speed there, you know what I'm saying? I don't think a minute's gonna kill any of us, you know? And I got a call from a lady before we came out here and she kinda was shooting on me a little bit because she said, look, my daddy's got a golf cart, you know, and it gets back to what Jeremy was saying, you know? And he said, he really loves to put the old dog on that golf cart and just kinda ride around in the afternoon, take it easy, you know, ha- having a little, maybe even a little toddy, we don't wanna say that, but you know? He's enjoying himself, okay? So don't ride him no dick for drunk driving, okay? Take him home. Cause he's having communion on the golf cart right now. But uh, but uh, that's uh, you know, all, you know, it, it's like with the, you know, you never stop and think about it, you know, until you hear just like what you said. I mean, you're going from forty-five to eighty-five percent, percent chance of getting killed at ten miles an hour. I think anybody, I mean, with little common thought, you know, you know, little, you know, I think they give it up, you know, with, with no big deal. But we need to have some hearings and let the people decide, you know, because it, it's not these five guys here to decide. It's the general public to decide, okay? And, and uh, I'm just glad to see everybody out. But now we're gonna let these other ladies and gentlemen go loose and we're gonna start with Mr. Woody.
Well, first of all, I got a text from the same lady that you got the phone call from. Told me the same story. So in fact, we got four or five emails over the weekend about the dog park. And uh, I, I hope that some of the folks that emailed us will express, you know, their thoughts on the issue. We'll get the public comments section. Um, but you know, heard David say we're doing the best we can and it's a priority of what that land was used for. Um, Brian and Gerald and I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to go through the town's orientation. It was David and Chris Clemmons and Tim and Christie Ferguson and Jeremy and I'm sure there's two or three more I'm missing. Started at nine that morning and went to six that night. David didn't even let us have lunch, right? Let's go to the store and get a pack of nabs at three o'clock. Uh, but if you really wanna learn about what's going on in the town and what all it takes to run this town, you just listen to these folks talk about everything they have to do, what's on their plate and what all they're responsible for. Chris gave us a tour of the new sewer, of the lift station down in the west end. And he also gave us a tour of lift station number three, so we could see the difference. But it was really, really impressive, the town staff spending their time telling us what, you know, what they were responsible for. And these folks do a lot with the, the small staff they have. Um, and then last thing I wanna pile on to what you said about the lobbying. I actually spent part of my career at BBNT, not lobbying politicians, but lobbying government agencies like the Federal Reserve and people like that. And it takes time. You have to build relationships and it's, it's, like you said, it doesn't feel good. But if you're not at the table when the crumbs get dispersed, you don't, you end up not getting any. And that's just, just the way it is. So I think we need to let this lobbying play out for another year. Then we see, start of next year, whether we wanna continue it or do something different. And I appreciate everybody being here. This is a nice crowd. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
First off, I wanna apologize for missing that December meeting. I had one or two choices. It's to go on a vacation that we had planned for two years.
You didn't have no choice.
Or get shot in the head. So uh, I apologize for that. I'm glad to see everybody out. I know it's cold and miserable out there. Um, one thing I wanna encourage and I don't know, I, there was a lot of people at the meeting for the I H A and with the C R C and all that stuff. But if you're not familiar with the inlet hazard area, I think they're still laying on the table back there. Um, please stop and take a look because it is a huge area that they're adding. I know we just directed the town to write a letter on behalf of the town and that was what everybody wanted us to do. But that in no means stops each and every one of you from doing the same thing. And I would encourage it to call anybody that you know that's affected by this. I mean, they get one from the town, that's great. And, but if they get a thousand from, from homeowners and, and people that have real estate interests here and it's gonna affect everybody if that goes through and that deadline is coming up quick. Um, I have their emails if, if you wanna email me. Um, their name is Braxton Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, and Ken Richardson. And um, they're accepting these through the end of this month and that's not far off. So I would encourage, i- if you've got ten minutes of your time or five or whatever you have, to shoot them something you're writing, voicing uh, the opposition it is. I can't imagine anybody supporting it. So um, I'd like to have, have all you guys on board for that. Please don't hesitate on any of these items. We're working for you and I wanna hear it. So I'm not offended if you send me emails either way or call me or whatever you wanna do. I'll try to meet with you uh, in, any, anytime I can. Um, I also wanna thank you for your support for voting for me in the election and I hope that I can represent this town to the best of my ability and I will. Um, like I said, feel free at any time to, to be in my ear and tell me what you think because that's, that's what I'm here for. And um, we didn't do much but spend money tonight and that's, I mean, I'm having trouble with a lot of it and I don't wanna go into detail. But we at some point have to generate some revenue to offset that. I don't want it to come from protecting the island that we live on, so it's a challenge. But there is a, a lot of need here that we, there's a lot of, I wouldn't say need, there's a lot of stuff that we have to do. And it's, uh, these are very hard decisions. I don't, I don't like making. Um, but there, I don't see any way around some of them. But um, we, we have to at some point try to figure out how to bring in some money to offset some of this too, so. The want things are definitely gonna have to be, in my opinion, and I think maybe we're gonna have to look at each and everything real hard. I mean, I want everybody to have what they want and uh, I want what I want too. But um, you know, th- these are tough decisions and I just wanna let you know that, you know, I had trouble with some of them tonight, so. Um, feel free to pat me on the back, make me feel better, but uh, just, it's just the way it is. But I appreciate seeing y'all and I'd like to see the middle field up too, so bring 'em on.
Commissioner Mike?
These are hard acts to follow. We've covered a lot of the large area. But I, I would uh, try to emphasize what Brian just said about contacting uh, the people. I, I found it in, in my career that it's easier to persuade somebody to do something than it is to persuade them to change their mind once they've done something. So if you could get out on front and, and send something that doesn't just say, I don't like the plan, but give the reason why. It doesn't make sense. I mean, the simplest thing is, we accrete and we've accreted sand on the west end for the last forty years and somehow they hold that against us when they do that computation. Makes no sense. You don't have to be a mathematician. You don't have to know algorithms. It just doesn't make any sense. So please take that. I also, I'm glad to see there's more people here than at normal. And the same thing goes for us. If you look at the agenda and whether there's something on the agenda that you wanna talk about or not, it helps us to find out before we make a vote, how people feel and what their feelings are. And, and don't come back after we voted and say, you know, you didn't do your homework. It's a lot easier to, to make us a wise decision if we have the input from the people before we have to make it, so, thanks. And the last thing I'd say is, the town during the course of the year holds different little social events, whether it's Christmas time, social and have one for the veterans. It's a nice thing to come to and it's a nice part of the town. And so on February fourteenth, if you're not doing anything, it would be nice for you to show up and celebrate. Last year when we did the fiftieth birthday, it was really nicely done. The Parks and Recs put a lot of time in. It wa- it was a nice affair and uh, I'd encourage everybody to come on the fourteenth.
Commissioner Pat?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, um, such a cold day. Um, I'm gonna say the same thing that Brian and Mike said. I think right now, the most important thing that people can do is to organize some opposition thoughts for the I H A and send them in to the contact before January thirty-first. As they said, the comments coming from the town, of course, are extremely important. But we also wanna hear from you. They were very impressed by the number of people we had come. They were very impressed about the number of questions that they got from different people. So, you know, continue that. Let's get stuff in and writing that expresses what we see is inappropriate for what they're doing. As I said, we don't wanna just hear you don't like it. That's nice. We'll put it in a pile. But that isn't gonna help you make your, make your point. Um, second, um, I know it may look like I took over the agenda with all of these items and I don't intend to do that every month. But I sorta had a whole bunch of stuff that had been building, building, building. So I promise you, I will not hijack more meetings and make it look like it's Miss Pat's meeting. Everybody get home safely and be warm tonight. Thanks.
Okay, and, and now anyone in the audience wants to speak, come up and give your name. And uh, we're, we're, and you ain't, come right on up to the podium here. Give your name and, and, and let us hear it. Your address?
I'm Dolly Mitchell. I'm at one thirty-two Tarpon Drive with my host, Lewis. Listening uh, to Jeremy tonight on the uh, speed limit. I mean, I love when it changes to forty-five, so I thought until I listened to you tonight, I never knew before that we were restricted in the number of crosswalks based on the forty-five speed limit. Uh, I never really knew until this year that the golf carts were, if you drove forty-five, uh, if you drove them after the uh, speed limit changed, that I was violating the law. Life is a compromise and I'm willing to give up ten miles an hour to get more crosswalks on this island and to be able to drive my golf cart whenever, you know, on O B W. There are a lot of people in this room tonight and you've got voices and you've got to decide which way you're gonna swing on this. But you gotta make the points, the positive points, what benefits and not just let the information go out there and let people get angry. I've lived here, I mean, I haven't lived here, but I've owned property since nineteen seventy-six. I never knew some of this information until tonight. So I can change my mind and I have changed my mind and I will push for the thirty-five miles an hour year round. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jefferson Hodges. I live down Brunswick here two five four. My concern is a minor one to many, but to us it's very important. I'm a dog walker and a dog park's a very important part of our life and it was. It's now a drug spoil. To me, it's perhaps a toxic dump, as far as I'm concerned. I don't believe it's ever gonna be habitable for anybody unless you do, do core samples and prove to me it's not gonna be outgassing toxins. And to cover it with enough toxic oil inside would be a very expensive procedure. But I think the town really doesn't have to do right now. There needs to look at. But I think a new dog park in an area on this island and some land that's not being used for anything of particular importance would be excellent. It's very inexpensive. It doesn't take a lot to fence in an area with a couple of divisions of between large and small dogs. Our dogs love it. We love it. It's a great place to socialize and meet people. I've met a lot of people here, um, from the dog park to the solding because of our, our place with our animals. And uh, I don't think it can be re- returned to its priorities as a dog park. You can put your dumpster back there and all your other equipment, fine. I don't wanna be there with my dogs unless you can prove to me the land's gonna be safe from having any outgassing. I'd also like it to be put on the agenda perhaps uh, for the next meeting uh, for discussion and any resolution because I don't believe this is an issue that takes a lot of effort to figure out what to do with. I'm sure the town has the property somewhere, that this can be, this can be done. Thank you for your time, all of us.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Council. Uh, I have been here for three years now. We're at three, three, four Ocean Boulevard West. Uh, there's several of us here that would love for you to um, establish a temporary dog park. We are, in concurrence with Jeff, we don't know, can you tell us how toxic the dog park would be that has the spillage in it now, once it's finished? We, if, we have no idea where the, what property Holden Beach owns. Is there a site that we can go to to see or we can give you some examples? Hey, it looks like there is property here. It looks like there is property there. Is there something temporary you can do for us? We missed the dog park. Um, people that come in here during the rental season are asking, what can we do? Why is the dog park gone? But we all used it and we've met a lot of different people. It's a good place to socialize. Older people, and of course, there are a lot of older people that live here, um, including me.
And me.
It's just a good place to go and you can turn your dog loose. And older people that can't hold on to a dog, it's a wonderful place for them to. So if you could think about what does the town own that we could set up a temporary dog park that we could use? Until you can discuss it further and find something permanent, or is it going to be toxic where the spillage is now? That we don't know. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
My name is Dawn Bailey and I've been coming to Holden Beach since I was in middle school. I won't tell you when that was. But I'm a second generation property owner with my parents and this is my first uh, B O C meeting. And over the last year, I started listening to the uh, the YouTube channel and it is a bit hard to decipher everything that's going on, so if you could speak up, it would be wonderful. But we really appreciate that. But um, I, I came tonight and uh, and I wanted to say a word of appreciation for two things. Uh, there's many, many things, staff, everything, but uh, the consistent consistencies in this town, this place, I have come to love because I'll tell you, when I was in middle school, you know, I was longing for Merle Beach Dave. So I was like, oh Lord, you know, why Holden Beach? So you think as a kid, come into Holden Beach and there's nothing here, let's go to Merle. But I dearly love this place and consistent things that have been wonderful. And I think that is taking care of this town and helping it to be the wonderful place it has always been. Number one, I can't say enough about um, our mayor, Alan Holden and- Number one, I can't say enough about our mayor, Alan Holden, and his insight, and I appreciate the commissioner's listening to the words of wisdom and the pearls of wisdom, because listening over the last, I don't know, year, debates that have gone on, and I think he brought some real light to what, you know, he, he was born and raised here, he was here in the inception, he knows how hard it is to create relationships with your neighboring islands, and, you know, kinda puts things in perspective, so I really do appreciate him, and I'm, like I said, I've known you for, for two, a lot of years. And the other thing that I appreciate the most about Holden Beach is our police department. I don't think we can say enough about them. I think we have fewer officers now than we did when I came here as a kid, quite frankly. But, you know, now they have trucks, before they had cars, but there seemed to be a whole lot more of them, and they've patrolled up and down the beach all night long. I used to sit on the porch with my dad at night, rather than watch, you know, three channels on television, and we didn't have cable there either, and we'd count how many times they'd patrol up and down the beach, and I always felt safe here, and inviting friends to here, and having people rent for me, and said, "You don't have to lock your doors," I'm, "Sorry, Jason, I'm not gonna do that anymore." I had been locked out and called in, and Officer Jessica came in, took me through the back door, because she found a way to get in, searched the place, but I've been sitting here for 30 years. Anyway, I just wanna thank you all so much, and actually, you just...
Thank you.
I'm the last one who's going to speak, so I'm gonna be very quick. As far as the 35 mile per hour speed limit, anyone who lives on the, the east end, I'm Carrie Craig, my husband and I live at 128 Halsted, there, there needs to be some kind of a crosswalk at the regional parking. We've seen many hair-raising experiences where someone in the turn lane is motioning the tourists to come across, and the, the go-through, the through lane is still going, and we've, we've seen some really, really hair-raising near misses there. So, I, I appreciate the consideration, if that's what it takes, then that's, that's what we'd like to see done.
Hi, I'm Lauren Thrackorton, I live on Brunswick Avenue. I'm a proponent for a dog park primarily because when I walk my dog at night, I get run over by bicycles. Now, it's dark, I, you know, I wait till dark, thinking everybody's off the sidewalks with their bikes, but it's summertime, they're still out, so, you know, there should be somewhere on this island that you can locate a dog park. If it's temporary, fine, and I agree, you know, I don't know what's in the spill area down there, it kinda looks probably a little strange, I don't know, but there's gotta be somewhere you can locate a small dog park for us to use. Thanks.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
We got one.
Okay, okay.
My name is Catherine Clark, I live at 1016 OBW. I came tonight because of the dog park issue, but I wanna speak more to the speed limit issue. I live on the almost west end, and people get a good head of steam when they're roaming from one end to the other end of the island. 45 is not 45, 45 is probably 55, with some of the construction workers, it looks like it's 60. Before I left to come this evening, there was a guy who, I guess he was just testing out his new clutch, but I swear he was going 65 miles an hour. He started at somewhere in the mid-1100s and screaming down the road, and I thought there was somebody walking across the street, or my new friends, the deer and the foxes, it wouldn't have been pretty. So, I appreciate you bringing your statistics and your information, and I, I would, I know there are people that are gonna go, "What on earth are you talking about, after being so damn slow to begin with?" But if we can't have a crosswalk because it's tied to a speed limit, then I, I would really advocate for a reduced speed limit on that end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go ahead.
All in favor?